I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education to order at this time. I will stand up for, we'll have a moment of silence at this time. Last time for the pledge of allegiance. We have our four people sign off for public comment tonight. Our first person is Mr. Burge and the superintendent will help us to keep the time.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Randy Burge. I'm a lifelong resident of Lee County, a product of the schools here as well as my whole family. I really have no comment. I really just wanted to ask two procedural questions. The first to Dr. Smith. As Chair of the Finance Committee, can you tell me the procedure?
It's out of order.
I'm sorry?
That's out of order. We can't do that. You just have to make a comment. We don't ask procedural questions.
Okay, when could I make this?
You just make your statement. You can't ask any board member here when they're sitting any question. We don't answer questions. We don't, you just say your statement and then you leave. We write, we write back to you. We don't answer questions.
Okay, how can I go about asking questions?
I don't know. You just have to make a statement. That's what it says. We can't ask also, you can't ask anybody sitting here any question.
Okay. Back in August, I approached Dr. Arkenosho in regard to the process to begin looking into adding my company, and I'm not here representing my company tonight, as a vendor for your voluntary benefits for the employees of the county. I was told to make contact with Kelly Jones, which I did. She's been very accommodating. We were trying to make the agenda for the Finance Committee prior to the open enrollment, which is sometime this month. I've never been told the date. I prepared materials forwarded to Kelly Jones, which were then forwarded to Dr. Smith to be allowed to present to the Finance Committee. I was never allowed on the agenda, only through Ms. Jones, I was told. Originally that we already, originally that my company was requiring Section 125 cafeteria plan and that you had a third-party vendor that does that. I replied to Kelly that since you already had vendors in place, that that process was there and that my company would only require that you add a line into the payroll for the deduction from the employees. The product I was trying to offer to the employees, or at least present to the Finance Committee, was something that none of your vendors now are currently providing. It would be a tremendous value to the employees that you have now. I reiterated that to Kelly in my email and a couple of weeks later, I was then notified that I was still not allowed on the agenda because this was supplemental insurance and that you already had that in place. I felt the decision was arbitrary and unilaterally came to. And still to this day, I've never been contacted other than through Kelly as far as the reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Brenda Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brenda Johnson. I presently reside at 815 West McIntosh Street here in Sanford. I am also an alumni of the WB Wicker School and I'm also a board member of Brick Capital CDC. And I came tonight just to address, yes, on a concern that I have as far as the Wicker School. My comment is that I am very much, I was very much elated to find out that after the renovation of the WB Wicker School had been made and how beautiful it looks sitting on that hill, that it was about to become an elementary school. I've been reading in the paper though that concerns me is the fact that they're talking about the safety of the school. Now, there have been several daycare centers and presently a daycare center there now. And I know that parents care about their children. And if there was a safety issue, I don't believe that that would be allowed to be there. The other thing is that I grew up in that neighborhood. I have seen it come from a reckless, dilapidated community to a vibrant community now. And if this deal is taken off the table, which I feel like that that's the concern of many people, that it would be a setback, not only to Brick Capital, but to the community that it surrounds. I don't think you could have picked a better place. And talk about safety, I don't know any place in Sanford that you could put a school that would guarantee you 100% that nothing will ever happen. And I just came tonight to let you all know that there is a lot of concern about it and that a lot of people do not agree with the fact that there is a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Tom Lee, Mr. Lee.
I have concerns over the location of the school at WB Wicker. And one of the reasons why this was, this fell into my lap, I was at a dental facility in Harney County and I was surprised to see a young lady there that had graduated from the dental program that is currently at WB Wicker School. I told her they were planning to put an elementary school there and she says, "Oh, not a good idea." I asked why. She said that when she first started there, she would take her breaks outside. Shortly after she started, a couple of weeks after she began classes, she was taking a break outside and she heard gunfire. This concerned her, but it didn't deter her. She went back a few days later, maybe a week or two later for her break, sit outside. She heard gunfire again. Now, she's not a flighty sort of person. So she waited a few weeks and taken a break from class one day and she heard gunfire again. She wasn't sure. She said it could have been fireworks. So she was concerned enough to where she didn't go back outside again. This was two and a half years ago. My recommendation is we take a look at the oldest operating school in Lee County, Elementary School, and that is Ingram School. My kids went there. I'm very familiar with that school facility. And it was designed and built to be expanded. The classroom pods of four classes, at the end, they have accessible to build another one. And I think three different locations. And I think the money spent in expanding that school, and I'm sure a school is that age, needs some updates and some upgrades. I had, three kids went through there. Also had three that went to Wicker School while they were building West. And there were some definite challenges there in converting an old school to a middle school. I attended junior high at the old high school, now the Art Center, and there were definitely some challenges in that old school. But Ingram was intelligently designed to be expanded. Right now, it'd be expanded out to where the temporary classes are. And I also think the fixed cost of the administration needs to be looked at, which would not be required there. I've also been told that a, okay, a couple of other schools can be expanded also.
Thank you. The next person is Mata Underwood, Mrs. Underwood.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
We all have three minutes. Maybe we didn't say that. Three minutes. Three, three minutes.
Yes. Lee County Commissioners Court livestreams their regular meetings on the internet to keep the public informed in real time. Sanford City Council does also. And local TV broadcasts these meetings at a later date. The taxpaying public has a right to know the deliberations and the reasons for the decisions of these elected bodies, the way they are leading us and how they are spending our tax dollars. In addition, you, the Lee County Board of Education, are an elected body that impacts our community's children directly and their educational preparation to enter the workforce directly impacts our local economy and quality of life. I request that the Board of Education livestream video of these meetings and give permission to broadcast them on TV gratis for the good of the public. Now, there is one who attends every meeting and sees your deliberations, both in public meetings and behind closed doors, even without live streaming. He is the Lord God Almighty. He wants to enlighten you, to seek solutions that are honest and just and that are best practices and that will move our county forward. Even without live streaming, there is nothing that escapes God's awareness. Therefore, since both Sanford City Council and Lee County Commissioners for many years have begun their meetings asking the God's mercy and guidance, tonight, let us pray. Lord God Almighty, we come humbly before you asking for your guidance and watch care over this meeting of the Lee County Board of Education. Please, help us untangle knotty problems. Please, calm abrasive hearts and hold people accountable for civil communication and righteous actions that benefit our residents, their families, and our children's education. Give all citizens the courage to publicly speak to what they know, to face unpleasant truths with eyes wide open and to diligently, with honest hearts, resolve our educational problems. Lord, may we come together in mutual respect and a spirit of cooperation. All-knowing Father, may we hear your leading on each topic, may we, so we can make the best decisions, both short-term and long-term, for the education of our children and for the direction on how to grow us into one community of people. We ask your mercy and your blessings, Lord. In the name of the King of Kings and Lord of Lords, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Underwood. That will be the end of our public comment. The next thing on our agenda is the vision of Lee County Policy 2120, Code of Ethics for the School Board Members. Lee County School, Lee County School will teach each student the social and academic skill needed to become a responsible and productive citizen. Policy 2120, Code of Ethics for the School Board Member. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflict of interest, appearance of conflict of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Avoid solicitation and/or acceptance of gift in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board. Avoid the misuse of public phone. Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And avoid making confidential information public. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda at this time is the approval of the agenda for February 14, 2017.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the agenda for 214, 2017.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the minutes. I'd like to add the CIP talking points that were provided at the last meeting.
Okay. We have to finish the first motion first.
Okay. I thought she had already done that, sorry.
I second the motion to approve the agenda of 214, 2017.
Okay. It's, the motion is made and is seconded. Now, before we vote on that, we want to hear your, the motion.
I would like to change the minutes to...
There's a motion on the floor.
A motion on the floor. Yeah, exactly.
Discussion of the agenda.
Let's have a, is there any discussion of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, I would like to add the CIP talking points from the previous meeting to our minutes.
You're referring to the minutes.
Yeah, the motion's out of order. You're referring to item number seven. We're on item number six.
Alright, I thought you already done that. Just hanging in there.
You're a little there.
Motion's on, motion's on the floor for the agenda.
Motion is on the floor for the agenda. So we're not on the minutes right now. I will ask that we vote on the, on the agenda at this time. All in favor, I should signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Agenda is approved. The next thing is number seven, seven on the minutes, approval of the minutes of the agenda, okay? Now we can entertain your motion.
Again, I would like to add the CIP talking points to the minutes.
Are you making that as a motion?
Yes, I'm, I'm making a motion to add the CIP talking points from our previous meeting to our minutes.
Any discussion on that? On the CIP talking point? If there is no discussion, do we have a second?
I second the motion to include the CIP talking points in the area of, I'm trying to find it. Hang on, I clicked wrong. Hang on, I'm trying to figure out where to put it in the minutes. The discussion was included, I guess the best way, it was an open discussion prior to the closed session. So where it goes on the agenda, I'm not certain, but I'll second the motion to include it as discussion related to item number two of new business. Because that would be discussion of the failed motion. The discussion, however, should be included even with the failed motion, am I right?
It should be, it should be entered in the minute.
Correct.
It was a discussion.
Correct. Even though the motion failed.
Yeah, the motion failed, but it was a discussion. And the, if she has anything that she wants to present at this time, we can then vote, we can then present it. Because she spoke that day, but it could be entered in the, in the, in the minute. Now we can vote on that, since it's, it's on the floor.
So the motion is to amend the, amend the minutes of?
Of, 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 January 10th. Yes. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Let's do it by, let's do it by raising our hand. All in favor, should raise your right hand. Three. Okay. All opposed, should raise your right, right hand. Okay. Okay. The, the motion failed.
I'd like it to go on the record that I questioned the accuracy of the minutes of January 12th, I mean, January 10th, 2017, as the discussion is there and it will be on video. If it's not included in the minutes, I think we're remiss. But that's just my objection. The motion failed. Done deal.
Okay. Are you doing that as a, you didn't ask for personal time for?
Yes, a point of personal privilege. I'd like the minutes to reflect that I questioned the accuracy of the minutes for January 10th, 2017.
Okay. And that is noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next thing on the agenda at this time is the Chairman's Report. So many good things are going on in our school. And I just want to remind us that the purpose of being on the school board is to educate the children of Lee County. This past week, I was, I was exercising in my neighborhood, just walking around. And a guy, I ran into a guy who was doing the same thing, who was just exercising. And the guy, we just shook hands and said, "When did you move here?" He said, "I just moved here, I moved here about four years ago." I said, "Why did you move to Sanford?" And he said, "He moved because of our school system." He said he loved the school system, that his children, one just graduated, seventeen-year-old from, from Lee Alley College, and one is in Tramway, and one is in BT Bul, JR Ingram. And he said, "I love the school." He said, "I moved here from Wake County." I said, "You are welcome." I just want to remind us that the purpose why we're here is about the school. This week, we have so many things that is going on and I want to just, in my Chairman's Report, I want to enumerate a little bit of it and brag on them. This past week, we have the Avid Showcase. I was at Broadway and it was just a beautiful thing to see people from Mecklenburg County in Charlotte, people from Durham County, Cabro, Cabro Schools, and Chatham Schools, Chapel Hill Schools. They all came here to attend our Avid in Elementary School. It was very wonderful thing to see those people come here to see what we are doing and every one of them were bragging about our Avid program. And I was very, they say we are trendsetter. And I was, I was happy to see all of them, board members and superintendents and teachers from all these schools. And Mr. Kobo was there too. Both of us were at that meeting. And, and Dr. Smith, Lynn Smith was there also. It was wonderful to see all of those good things that were about. We're not about argument, we're not about fighting on this, but we're about educating the children of Lee County. Also, I want to brag about the Lee County Marching Band Band that will be coming up on the, on Thursday, the 23rd of February. So I want to invite all board members to attend that meeting. Also, I want to congratulate Lee Senior for winning the Quiz Bowl. So we're happy for you. Also, another thing I want to talk about is the Black History Month. A lot of programs in our school system at this Black History Month. So it can help all of us as board member or as people sitting here to go and see what our kids are learning about black history, about history of people in this country. It would be a good thing. So we're proud about what our kids are doing in school. Another thing I want to talk about is brag about a young man, Jack Hunter, who is on the big screen, he's a, he's a movie star in our community. He goes to BT Bullock. He's one of our students. So those are some of the things that our schools are doing, our students of these schools are doing that is very wonderful. Something I also want to bring up at this time on Policy 2230. I will read what I have put down so that we can, we won't have any confusion about it. At this time, I, Policy 2230 is a discussion on our committee structure and request by Mr. Kelly to look into our policy structure. At this time, I would like every committee member, I would like to tell every committees that we have, we have four committees. I want every one of these four committees to start a discussion in each of those committees to talk about a change, if they want us to change the time of our meeting for the, for the committees, to do away with the committees or to keep the committees in place. I would love for them to discuss about it and get back with, with the Board in April. And whatever they collect, every one of you committee leaders, whatever information you get from your committee, I want you to bring it back and bring it as a recommendation to the whole Board. And at that time, we will, we will vote on it if we need a further, if we need to look at it further or not. So that's my, that's what I have for that at this time. We want those feedbacks in the committees before we do anything with that. Another thing I want to discuss this today is about the records. We have on the, on this Board, we have several record, public record requests. This past, in the last two weeks, we got seventeen public record requests in the last two weeks from Keith Clark. He's somebody in our community. And another one we got this week, we have four, two requests from Mr. Calendine. I think it's two or one, from Jay Calendine. We also have one public record request from Sheila Barber. That will end my, my rec, my report as the Chair. This, this will end the Chairman's Report.
Mr. Chair, may I proceed with the superintendent's report?
Yes.
First off, just like to wish Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Thanks for joining us on Valentine's Day for a school board meeting. I'd like to ask Dr. Jim Atkinson to come forward to recognize our Clean School of the Month.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Gives me an honor again to award the Clean School of the Month Award to a very deserving school, Deep River Elementary School. Ms. Amy Lund is principal. She's here tonight, so I'd ask her to come up and receive the award. And while she's coming up, I'd like to brag on the other schools too that we, as you saw in your notes, we have seven schools that were above 96 and all of our schools scored above 90. So we're real proud of the cleanliness of our schools and we want to at this time congratulate Ms. Lund and her staff for having the cleanest school. So thank you.
Well, Happy Valentine's Day. I'm here alone. My, my custodians all had dates for Valentine's.
That is good.
So that left you with me and I don't have a date. Well, kinda. He's probably waiting at home. But I do want to tell you how much I appreciate my custodians. They are wonderful. Mr. Harold Campbell, Ms. Joyce Williams, and Ms. Margie Reeves. They do very, very hard work every day to keep our school clean and much like all the other custodians at the other facilities. And you would be very proud to know how well they've kept our facilities, how clean they look. And we are trying to preserve the money that you put into the schools that we currently have and keeping those clean so that they'll last us for many years to come. So thank you again for recognizing our, our custodial staff. It's very, and very appreciated.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Amy.
Congratulations.
Each, each month, I get the opportunity to give a superintendent's extra effort award. Tonight is, it is a little bittersweet. I get to recognize a wonderful employee who has retired. But I, I thought tonight would be an outstanding time to brag a little bit about what he means to our school district and what he has meant to us and how much we wish him the very best for the future. For those of you who, who know him, Frank Thompson Jr. has been an outstanding... Um, for those of you who, who know him, Frank Thompson, Jr., uh, has been an outstanding educator in our school district in Lee County. Uh, most recently, he has been assistant principal at Lee County High School. I really don't think that that, uh, title, uh, does him justice for what he does. Frank, for as long as I know, have known him going back to when he was at Ingram Elementary School, um, has always been the type person that would say, um, "How can I help you? What more do I need to do?" And I want to just give it my best and my all because I want the job to be done right. And, and the most important thing about Frank is not only has he said those things, he's always acted in that manner, and his, his actions have always backed up his words. And we are losing, I believe, a wonderful, great educator who, who not only believes in our school district, but believes in our community. And, uh, tonight, I would just like to recognize him, uh, for his efforts on behalf of our school district and our children every day. I'd like to ask Frank Thompson, Jr. to come forward, please, for the superintendent's extra effort award. Frank, before we give you the award, do you mind saying a few words and, uh, I know you love that.
Andy, wait, before, uh, Dr. Bryan, before he, uh, says anything, I don't know if any other board member wants to say something, because some of us already, uh, did, we know him, we have keys that passed to him, anybody? Dr. Smith?
I, I absolutely do, I tried to pin you down Monday and you wouldn't tell me, uh, what are you gonna do next? I know you're not quitting, we gotta keep you in this somehow. And, uh, the job that you have done in the past was just superlative, and we really appreciate everything you've done for all our children, wearing your debt.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I want you to think back to Broadway School. I had you as a PE teacher for, for five years, and you taught me how to get on a parachute. And, um, in your accident and what that meant to Broadway School, and I'll never forget the day you came into the school and it was in the media center and you, you, uh, beat on your, uh, body cast and said that you were a turbo shell.
That's right.
So, you know, as a former student, and this means, I mean, I don't want to stop there for saying anything before I even get more tear yet.
Thank you.
As a chair, I want to say thank you, and, uh, uh, to me, uh, you are not only a teacher, you are a coach, because, uh, my kids, uh, uh, play for you and do things for you here, and I want to say thank you for what you do for all of our children together. We thank you for your service, and, uh, God bless you as you move forward for the, to the future.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Now you can speak.
No, I, um, well, Patrick, we only did the parachute for three weeks. But that's what everybody at Broadway School remembers is a parachute, and, uh, it was, it was a lot of fun, but, um, I did this because I love kids, um, and, and I, y'all know that. Um, but I went into administration not only because I love kids, but it's because I love the staff and I love Lee County schools, so everything I've done is for Lee County schools. And so thank you very much for giving me that opportunity.
Stay right there, Frank.
Don't go away.
Get to accept us more and then have your picture.
Before we go into our committee report. Okay. I didn't know you have se- several of them.
Um, uh, one, one other recognition tonight I'd like to, um, to share with the public. Uh, I, I think a lot of people know that we produce, um, what we call a digital digest every week, uh, for our school district that talks about something good that happens every week in Lee County schools. And, uh, the North Carolina Public Relations Association has, um, has an award ceremony and recognition at the end of every year, and they recognize public relation awards that we have, uh, throughout the state. And, uh, we're very pleased, and I'll, I'll ask the, uh, chair and vice chair if they'd be willing to do this. Uh, would like to present, uh, three of the highest awards from this association, the gold awards. Uh, to Ms. Sharon Spence for, uh, three editions of our Inspired magazine that won three awards. Uh, one was the, uh, story of a student at Ingram, uh, about making everybody feel like somebody, and it talked about a relationship, uh, between two students at Ingram Elementary School and how one sort of took the other one underneath their wing and, uh, sort of, uh, it, it was a foreign student actually, and, and took care of them, uh, during the course of their, their time there. Um, also, uh, Not Your Parents Kindergarten, uh, we outlined sort of some of the changes that have happened in kindergarten over the last several years and, uh, how high the, uh, how high the, uh, academic expectation is for kindergarten. And then, uh, a publication just to recognize, uh, Inspired as a, as an outstanding digital digest magazine. So if I could ask the chair and vice chair to present these to Ms. Sharon Spence, who helps our staff and puts all this together for us, if you could hand this to her and recognize their hard work for their efforts for Inspired. Congratulations to Sharon and, and the staff, and, uh, Haley is here as well, she is part of that effort and, uh, and just thank them for all of their work and putting out the good news about Lee County schools.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate it, thank you, appreciate it very much, thank you. I like being on this side of the camera, I don't like being on that side. I could've done the bunny ears that time, I suppose. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you all. Um, Mr. Chair, I'd also like to, uh, ask, uh, Gail Smith and Karen Foshee-Cameron if they would come forward. Uh, we, uh, received feedback on our AIG plan that, uh, we, uh, we gave to, uh, DPI. I think we came through, uh, with, uh, flying colors, if you could just give us a, a brief summary of, of what that is and, um, uh, and how far we've come.
Okay, um, last year was our re- our revision year for our AIG plan, that happens every three years. And, uh, for our two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen plan, um, a lot of input went in from teachers and our advisory council and administrators, and we tried to include everybody through the survey process and meetings, parents and students. We did, we did surveys with parents and students, thank you. Um, and through all that, we revised the plan, um, with the support of this board. We now have our seven specialists at the elementary schools, and we are looking to keep expanding. Um, the plan feedback from DPI, um, it looked at actually the whole, there are six standards in the AIG plan, uh, there are forty-five practices within those six standards. Um, they are rated in three different categories, each, uh, practice is rated three ways, so we basically are getting a hundred and thirty-five ratings, individual ratings. Out of those a hundred and thirty-five, um, it can either be evident or not evident. Um, the categories, um, of the ratings are, is clearly communicated, um, let's see, up here, let me get more. Let's see, clearly communicated or aligns with the standard or meets submission guidelines. Well, in the meet submission guidelines, we had all evident, of course, because we followed the protocol, we did everything we're supposed to do. Um, we only had four not evidence out of those a hundred and thirty-five, so we felt very good about that, very relieved, and we have learned since that nobody received less than three. So, uh, we felt like we were, you know, we had really done what we were supposed to do in trying to address the standards and follow best practices with AIG. Um, three of our areas, uh, were, it was a clearly communicated thing, so we have since had a conference call with, um, one of the representatives from DPI to kind of get feedback on, "Okay, you gave us this, now can you explain a little bit more about exactly what you were looking for, exactly what we need to do?" So they made some recommendations, and we are planning to address those in our upcoming plan revision. So we, like, next year will be our mid-year, um, self-assessment, we'll look at that, and then on our, the year after that, we'll start in on our third year of revising the plan again. So we do plan incorporate all their suggestions, um, as much as we can into our next revision. So at, at, the final consensus was, our plan was rated complete with no revisions needed. So we just wanted to make sure you all understood where we, what the feedback was on the plan.
And that, that's unique, yeah, that's unique.
A point of personal privilege, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you can ask question now, anybody can ask question.
Um, it's not a question, it's a commendation for the work that these ladies have put into our AIG program over the past several years, and, um, I've had the distinct pleasure to work with them even before I got on this board in steering committees with the AIG program. And, um, I, I don't know that it's coming across quite clearly what they said. They said out of a hundred and thirty-five marks, they only had four that were not perfect. And if that just shows you the kind of leadership and the, the perfectionism of these ladies, they called them and said, "Well, what was wrong with the four?" Um, I, I'm just imagining my children saying, "Well, teacher, I got a ninety-six, what can I do better?" And, uh, if that's the mentality that we're sharing with our young people, that there's always room for improvement and that good enough is not good enough, then, uh, these ladies are definitely stalwarts in our district and to be praised for the work that they do. Um, and it's no small task to do anything for the state, uh, but these ladies have done it and done it so exemplary, I think really, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't just say what a pleasure it is to work with them and how hard they work for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just want to say something, I, I, uh, when I got on the board, uh, it looks like, uh, we don't have AIG anymore, and, uh, my kids enjoy AIG, and I was, uh, one of those people that was passionate to bring it back, and, uh, in the last, uh, few years that we have, uh, Dr. Bryan, he's been a push, and, uh, we're glad that, uh, we have AIG back for all of our children and every demographics have enjoyed it, so I want to thank you for the hard work, like, uh, uh, Ms. Bowen said, I want to thank you for everything that you're doing, uh, we appreciate what you're doing and your effort, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to that, the, these two ladies have worked tirelessly to restore our AIG program back to its start some years ago, and, uh, we at the board really appreciate what you've done to get us back on track with our, uh, AIG students, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, but we.
To do it without your support and, and the belief that, you know, our children deserve this.
And they do.
Yes, your, your support, Dr. Bryan's support, the support of the board, and, um, even now, the administrators who, who are, you know, we have growing pains, of course, anytime you try to implement something, you know, new, you have those, uh, growing pains, but they are all working with us, and I am just simply honored and delighted at the level of support that we're getting, I really appreciate it, and, and parental support, I might say too.
Thank you, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one more thing, Chair, uh, final thing, um, we, uh, we have had a series of, uh, what we call, uh, uh, bootcamps for, um, ACT work keys, uh, that were going on, uh, week before last, and, uh, this week, we have some ACT prep courses going on as well at the high schools, uh, support students preparation for the test, we're also in the process, early process of getting back some data on some benchmarks that we're going through that we'll be looking at in the next, uh, week or so. So everybody's really busy, uh, and, uh, really working hard and supporting our students. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you, I also want to, uh, say something that I missed when we started, I didn't, uh, want to thank all the visitors here tonight and, uh, for the media, uh, uh, record, I want to recognize the media here tonight, thank you for being around, and our representative from, from Fort Bragg, thank you for being here, and, uh, thank you for what you do for all of, uh, uh, our children, uh, the representative for, from, uh, Fort Bragg, representing the military children, thank you. Uh, at this time, we will go to the, uh, committee reports, I will go with the curriculum and instruction first. Uh, Dr. Livingston.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Happy Valentine's to everyone. Uh, the middle school curriculum and instructions committee met on January the eleventh at San Lee Middle School. Dr. Andy Bryan discussed the change of, uh, exam schedule at the high school due to, due to the inclement weather. Dr. Bryan also discussed the, um, strategic planning that is underway district-wide. Principal Jalonda Jordan presented best practices, uh, on management behavior and procedures, and this plan was well received by those in attendance. The next middle school CNI meeting is scheduled for February the twenty-second, twenty-seventeen at Bragg Street Academy. The elementary curriculum and instructions committee met on January the eighteenth at Broadway Elementary. Dr. Bryan discussed the, um, strategic plan and, and his plans to move forward. Mr. John Conway stated that the school improvement plans, uh, the benchmarks are underway. The best practice report was given by Ms. Maples and Ms. Howard on creating costus level of thinking and questioning and on how avid is being used in the classroom. Uh, there are three levels of, of thinking and questions, which are, the first level is gathering information, level two is processing the information, and level three, applying the information. They al- they also stated that, uh, this method is being used in the math and learning program. Ms. Gail Smith informed the committee that the district AIG plan had been submitted and received by DPI. The next elementary CNI is scheduled for March the fifteenth, twenty-seventeen at JR Ingram. The high school curriculum and instructions committee met on February the first, twenty-seventeen at Lee County High School. Congratulations are extended to the, uh, high school for the Quiz Bowl win, and as board members, we, uh, we all are very proud of their achievements. If you haven't had a chance to congratulate the Quiz Bowl members, please do that. Uh, Dr. Andrew Bryan stated that the target date for the final inputs of the, um, str- uh, strategic planning is tentatively scheduled for August, uh, the first in that timeframe. Information will be gathered in the following formats, town hall meetings, online, and paper surveys and face-to-face meetings. H bill, H House Bill thirteen, uh, reduction in class sizes for K-three grades was also discussed. The central office is looking into the matter because the bill does not include funding for teachers or for expansion of the classroom. Ms. Speck presented the, her best practices on routines, objectives, and skills requiring bell-to-bell learning, situat- sit- situational awareness and effective communication. The next high school CNI meeting is scheduled for April the fifth, twenty-sev- seventeen at, uh, Southern Lee High School. Mr. Chair, I've been very busy in the last couple of months here, and so this concludes my report.
Thank you. The next one we have, uh, is facility and technology, uh, Dr. Lynn Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the facilities and technology committee met on January the twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, our first item of business was an offer, uh, request from American South, and you may remember, American South is that business located right in front of BT Bullock School, it's a construction, in fact, as they did the renovation on this high school. Uh, and they made a, uh, Jeff Miles, who owns that business, was president at the meeting and made a presentation on his proposal to purchase additional land at BT Bullock Elementary School. Uh, interestingly enough, what he wanted to purchase would actually come right up to the curbing at the po- lower parking lot at BT Bullock School. Um, Mr. Kelly and I decided that, uh, it would not be in our best interest to pursue an offer from, uh, Mr. Miles at this point to purchase additional property at BT Bullock School. The other item that, uh, on our agenda was a master bus financing agreement, uh, with, it's time, and Mr. Cagle is here who can answer questions if you have any, uh, to replace one of our school buses, uh, replacement school bus. Uh, replacement, school bus replacements are paid for by the state. Uh, we have to enter a contract, a lease agreement with, uh, Thomas Bus Company in the amount of, uh, eighty-two thousand dollars. Of course, that money comes from the state since it is a replacement bus. Am I stating that correct? And, uh, we, we agreed to, uh, pursue that, uh, finance agreement with Thomas Bus Company and, uh, pers, and, uh, get another replacement bus, uh, for our students.
Mr. Kegel, for the purpose of, uh, uh, new board members, can you come forward and explain a little bit about it for, for, for the audience?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The finance agreement, um, several years ago, I think twelve or thirteen years ago, the general assembly approved purchasing replacement school buses through a finance or lease agreement. And we've been doing this for eleven of twelve, the, the twelfth year was. Um, if you received one bus, they would pay for it without lease agreement, they don't do that anymore. But it's a four-year lease agreement, so, um, the, the fines are transferred from DPI to Lee County Board of Education. They make our payments, we just do roughly, uh, paperwork.
So, the state pays for it?
The state does pay for it.
I don't know if any other board member has any question on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
Uh, that concludes my report on the finite, uh, the facilities and technology committee. Uh, we will meet next on February the eighth at five o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a finance report, uh, Dr. Lynn Smith, the chair of, uh, finance.
That'd be March the eighth.
March the eighth.
March the eighth, okay.
Uh, the finance committee has not met since December. And don't feel like we've been negligent, budget season is approaching and, uh, there will be multiple meetings. And our next meeting will be Thursday, the twenty-third of February.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Smith. At this time, we will ask, uh, uh, Ms. Bowen, uh, for policy.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the policy committee met on the nineteenth of January. And, uh, we had a couple of things on the agenda. The Title I Program comparability of services was tabled until we can get Dr. Chapel to attend. She was out ill that day. And just for purpose of clarification, we tabled that until our next meeting, so that will be picked up, uh, next week. Then we had several, basically, it's, um, application-type paperwork that we had to review for change. One of them was, uh, what we call the affidavit, the gray form educational residency affidavit. Um, this was just a clarification of a form we use when a student is attending a school outside of their zone uh, due to family crisis and so forth. Um, if, uh, students living with an aunt temporarily because mom and dad can't take care of them, that kind of thing. And they're still retaining their school they started at. And so, there was just a clarification of landlord's rights, that, uh, no landlord gains rights to the student's information as a result of their residing in their tenancy. It was a, it's an odd little clarification that had to be made. Uh, and that was basically put on here, um, as, I believe that's an FYI. It is not an action item. Uh, we had two other clarifications. One is in the enrollment form for Tramway, and this might be, um, a good time to point that out since they're undergoing lottery application process right now. And that is that Tramway Elementary School is our only year-round school. We kind of know that as a, as a public, but it is an attendance zone area as well. There are buses that run to Tramway if you happen to be within its designated attendance zone. You probably know they run a lottery for additional students to apply to go to that school. If they live outside of the bus zone, the agreement is that the parents will provide transportation. And so, in the application process, that was made clear and the regulations that established transportation for Mr. Kegel and everything, those were made very clear, that if you live outside of the bus zone, it is the parent's responsibility to transport their child to school. Uh, so, there were two different issues related to that. And, um, they're, they've been in action all along. They, I don't know that they were always codified in writing, and so, we, we made those clarifications. Um, the final issue that was on our agenda that evening was, um, the committee had received a request from our vice chair to take a look at the committee structure and as a possibility of, I don't want to say abolishing, but that might be the right word, uh, getting rid of the committee structure as it currently exists in favor of a workshop type, type, type situation. And this is what Dr. Akonoshia was mentioning at the beginning. Um, we had a, a lively discussion, I think there were a lot of ideas thrown, uh, forth about whether it would be in the benefit of the board for transparency purposes to let go of the two-person committee structure and instead have issues brought before the seven of us. Um, as it stands right now, information is housed in little boxes, and why not open all the boxes, um, in front of a full board? And so, we're looking into that. Uh, the chair agreed to do an ad hoc committee, and I think that was a good way to do it, is have each of the four standing committees kind of approach their people. That's probably the easiest way to reach all the stakeholders. Um, so, I'm looking forward to feedback from that. We did table the mo, uh, there really was no motion, it was a review of policy. But we did table that until, um, upcoming meeting. And with the chair's recommendation to have information back by March, we will take that up again in the March meeting of the policy committee. Um, other than that, our next policy meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, the twenty-first. And we'll be in Heinz Education Building at five o'clock. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we'll be looking at the consent agenda. Uh, we have, uh, the consent agenda before you. Uh, if we have any discussion on it, it's open for discussion. And, um, if we have no question on the consent agenda, uh, we will.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, at this time, uh, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, okay. Uh, aye carry, the motion is approved, consent agenda is approved. The next thing we have, uh, here is, um, the Tramway, uh, Elementary School calendar. Mr. Dietrich.
Members of the board, thank you very much. Uh, I just wanted to bring forth to you changes to the Tramway year-round calendar as a result of the inclement weather that occurred. And as a result of the inclement weather, we are wanting to make two changes to the Tramway calendar. Turn March twenty-third, which was a workday, into a intercession day. And then, take April seventeenth, uh, which was an intercession day, and turn it into an instructional day, which brings a full week of instruction with the seventeenth through the twenty-first. And what that will allow us, for them to make up some of that time from the misty days we occurred. And that's what works best for Tramway's calendar at the moment. Um, please let me know if you have any questions with regard to that change.
And this will align with, um, just to add to this, Mr. Dietrich, this will align with what we did in adding a workday, I mean, adding a school day into the traditional calendar.
Correct, which is what we did last month.
Okay. So, if you have no further question, I will ask for a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the changes.
Motion to approve the calendar change for Tramway Elementary School.
Second.
We have a motion and the motion is, uh, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all ayes carry, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask, uh, uh, Mr. Kelly, Patrick Kelly, uh, to, uh, make a motion for us to go into, uh, closed session.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, and not a public record and nor incline to General Assembly Section 143 through eighteen dot eleven A-one.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion is, uh, seconded. And, uh, we will go into closed session at this time. Want to come out of the closed session?
I make a motion that we, uh, soon resume open session.
I second that motion.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all in favor, approve, okay.
I make a motion that we approve the two-year contract of the, uh, new assistant principal here at Lee County High School.
Second the motion.
It'll be Aaron Manuel.
And you man, Aaron Manuel.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all in favor, uh, carry. The next, uh, one we have is, uh, the, um, personnel report, one, a motion to, uh, approve, uh, accept it as, uh, presented to us.
I move that we accept the HR report as presented in closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all in favor, carry.
I make the most important motion of the night, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Lee County, uh, Board of Education is adjourned, thank you.